My watch says seven o'clock even though that clock says a little bit earlier, but I'm going to open the Select Board meeting for May 21st, 2018 with a reminder that this is recorded at CCTV and it's necessary to, when you address the board, to come forward, identify yourself and speak into the mic so that whatever you say can be picked up. And also, this is not a perfect room for acoustic, so speak loudly so that other members who are present can hear. The consent agenda, we have a gift acceptance from James Hackett of $1,375 for the Council on Aging Gift Account. There was a gift of three wheelchairs which we're very appreciative of. One-day special licenses gaining ground June 15th from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., 341 Virginia Road, wine and malt. Emerson Umbrella, May 25, 26, and June 15th from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at 57 All Road to Nine Acre Corner, wine and malt. Saltbox Farm, July 13th, 12:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m., 40 Westwood Road, wine and malt. August 2nd, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., 40 Westfield Road, wine and malt. August 11th and 17th, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., 40 Westfield Road, wine and malt. And August 18th, 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., 40 Westfield Road, wine and malt. There were four proclamations, two of them we have not received the wordings from those requesting, but there is a proclamation on behalf of the Harrington House tenants, Peter and Jane Bennys, which Michael Lawson will proclaim at their retirement party. And there is a proclamation for Race Amity Day, whereas Concord supports the great seal of the United States of America which bears the inscription "E Plurbus Unum," which translates from Latin as "Out of Many One," and where is the greatest asset of the town of Concord is its people, and where is the town of Concord is comprised of multicultural, multi-ethnic, and multiracial citizens, and where is friendship, collegiality, civility, respect, and kindness are commonly shared ideals of the collective citizenry of the town of Concord, and where the TOWARDS E Plurbus Unum initiative has invited communities across the United States of America to join in introspection and reflection on the beauty and richness of the diverse people of this great nation while reaching out with the spirit of amity towards one another on the second Sunday in June, and where as House 2745, Chapter 163 of Acts of 2015 of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts establishes the second Sunday in June annually as Race Amity Day. Now therefore, we as the Concord Select Board do hereby proclaim June 10th, 2018 to be Race Amity Day and urge all its citizens of the town to take cognizance of the event and participate fittingly in its observance. Concord Select Board proclaimed this 21st day of May, 2018. And we also have two tour guide renewals. I am open for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Chris, Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The special permit granted by the Acton Board of Selectmen for our NAGAR Pond treatment, water treatment facility was recorded at the end of April and the 20-day appeal period expired today, so I didn't hear whether an appeal was filed or not, so I'll let you know tomorrow, but hopefully, as of Friday, there hadn't been no appeal filed. You'll notice the flagpole is being repaired, there was a crack picked up when we were fixing the lanyards for Patriots' Day, so those repairs are happening. It apparently was not structural. Sorry to hear that Richard Goodwin, Senior Advisor and Speech Writer for Presidents Kennedy and Johnson, passed away on Sunday, our condolences to the family. He was 86.
Wonderful movie, I don't remember the name of it, but yes.
Game show?
Game show.
Game show.
Que show?
Thank you.
The Second Annual Middlesex Jazz Festival is Saturday, June 9th, in Concord Center, looking forward to that. The Dog Park Feasibility Study Committee will have a public forum on May 22nd, so that's tomorrow, Tuesday, Tuesday, May 22nd.
I'll be right here.
7:00 p.m. in the townhouse. Relative to the Giroux Land, the Assistant Town Manager Kate Hodges is negotiating the purchase and sales agreement that the board will be reviewing later tonight. The target date for closing is July 17th. Part of that acquisition was the redevelopment of the site for a public park, and we issued an RFP for planning consultants to work on that, and 30 people did the walkthrough, 30 participated in the walkthrough. It's not often you get a chance to create a public park from scratch, so there was a lot of interest in working with the town on that. Proposals are due, I think it's May 30th. Cambridge Turnpike Phase 1 is now out to bid. The Phase 1 is the work that's not associated with the Millbrook and the bridge that will go over the Millbrooks, but all other, from one end to the other, all of that work is out to bid now. Bids will be open in June and work will start later this summer. The Phase 2, which is the work over the Millbrook, will be put out to bid in July for construction in 2019, so it'll be a two-year project. This is Public Works Week, and 300 eighth graders will be at the Public Works property on Wednesday touring the facilities and learning some hands-on experience about public works. Speaking of which, twice last week, our drainage contractor working on Monument Street hit unmarked gas mains that DigSafe required the gas company to mark, and the gas company failed to mark those gas mains, so luckily, nobody was hurt, but there was traffic tie-ups and some expenses incurred by the fire department in responding to the gas leak, so those will be backcharged to the gas company, and we have assurances they will try harder in the future. Fire Chief is working with Delia Kay, the NRC Director, to look at the possibility of removing some large trees that fell this spring into the Assabette River. There's a couple locations where you simply can't get a kayak past, so they're looking at ways that they might be able to open that up.
River is fairly filled now, so just wait for a while.
So they might have to wait till low water. Just a reminder that at your next meeting on June 4th, Verizon will be coming in to talk about their request for use of town property for potential cell sites, and we've notified the abutters of the Emerson Umbrella area, or at least several of them. And Marcia will be in on June 4th to talk about parking plans and update on where we are with parking, and so there's a site visit scheduled for Thursday by this board, Thursday, May 31st, at 8:30 in the morning, to walk the parking lots and the different parking spots to get familiar with where things are, with Marcia.
You're gonna just meet in the Kaiser Road or, you know?
And so, yeah, we'll meet at the Kaiser Road parking lot, but I think we have to post where we're going to go on the site visit, so the public is invited to participate. You're not supposed to debate any of the merits of anything, but asking questions, finding out more is appropriate.
Okay. Do you have any other questions or comments?
I do. It's not related to your report, but this last weekend, there were, there was some kind of race.
Road race, and they left signs all over the, all over town.
Well, it's two kinds of questions. One, the signs are not supposed to be posted according to our sign ordinance, but more importantly, when do they need to get some kind of permission to do this in town?
I think, and I don't want to put Joe on the spot, but is Officer Morehan here? They do, I think those road races, foot races, cycle races, are, need to be permitted by the Police Department. They typically get the permit as long as they control traffic and so forth. We have historically allowed signs, directional signs that help participants find, you know, the end zone or what they're looking for, so they don't wander off, but with the condition that the signs be removed at the end of the event, several hours after the event is over. So Andrew did contact the event organizer to say, you've left a lot of signs behind. They said they thought they picked them all up.
Yep, they said they were out till 9:00 p.m. last night picking up signs, but they sent more.
But I wasn't complaining, I was just curious.
So it is, if a road race or bicycle race in town must be approved by the.
It starts with Kate Hodges, Assistant Town Manager. She reviews it, checks for their insurance, and then it goes to Inspector Shelley over at the Police Department. He arranges for the details for pedestrians crossing and stuff like that.
And part of the signs, the signs were also, I think, removed.
Please come forward and just.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Lieutenant Morehan.
The signs were out to mark the route for the bikeathon, and I think they were reminded again today to remove the rest of the signs, so they should be out hopefully by today.
And granting the permission.
So the Community Safety Officer.
Permission over safety signs.
Yes, yep.
Right, thanks.
Okay, I guess we are now ready for the 7:05 public hearing, Underground Fuel Storage, Eastern Propane, 210 Monuments Farm Road. There has been a public hearing notice dated May 10th in the Concord Journal, and I'm ready for a motion to open the public hearing.
I move to open the public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is George Hazeltine, and I'm an employee and representing Eastern Propane this evening. We propose to add a third underground propane tank over at 210 Monument Farm Road. It's a fairly large estate, and they have added some pretty big pieces of equipment, a 60-kilowatt generator, a full commercial kitchen, swimming pool heaters, guest housing. I believe the gentleman is a, some kind of a government representative of some foreign country or something like that, but they're spending incredible amounts of money, and so they need this extra gas supply over there to be able to meet the vaporization. I've been working with the fire department here in town, giving them details. They've been out, they've done some surveying, and basically at this point, we're just requesting permission to do a third tank. By the gas code, two underground tanks are acceptable, but when you go to a third tank on one designated piece of property, you need to have permission of the town or license. I have some guides that I'd like to hand out, if you'd want to pass these around, and you can keep these, and they're pretty informative of the code requirement for inspections and anode protection to protect the tanks from corrosion, and there's that guide lists everything from a small underground to a larger 1,000-gallon, and this would be a 1,000-gallon underground tank.
What is the size of the other two?
The thousands also, yeah, existing.
Huge amount of propane.
What is it used for? Is it to run the generator?
Yes, 1,000-gallon underground is dedicated to the generator alone. Generator is about the size of a car, so it's a pretty big estate, they need an awful lot of power to make.
Are they not customers of the light plant? They don't get.
Yeah, they do, it's a standby.
Standby.
Emergency, yeah.
Who's responsible for inspecting the tanks and how regularly are they inspected?
Eastern Propane, and that's done every five years, and we actually have a device that we put into the ground, and it checks the electrolysis in the ground. There are two anodes that are going to be buried in the tank, one to the left and to the right of the tank. A copper wire going back and connected onto the tank, and it's a sacrificial anode, very similar to a sailboat with the zinc weights on the shaft to take all the electrolysis that is created by cavitation. While in the ground, there's a natural electrical current that exists everywhere, and this, these anodes are about eight inches in diameter, about three feet long, and they're good for about 75 years. So for 75 years, any corrosion is attacking the anode first, and then you've got the lifespan of the tank after that, so it's a pretty long.
Is the inspection then the report filed with a town agency?
Yes, what'll happen is the general contractor on site will dig the hole and prepare it with sand bedding. Eastern Propane will come out with a crane truck, will set the tank in the ground, will attach the sacrificial anodes. Then we contact the fire department, fire department comes out, they have last visual inspection before it's backfilled. After they give us permission to backfill, we will backfill the propane tanks, with soft sand also, by the way, and they're always in an area where there is no traffic or any vehicle can drive over them.
So are these, the three tanks, are they connected in serial or are they?
There are two, there are two tanks that are going to be side by side with three feet of separation, and that's going to provide gas to the house, the greenhouse, the gas house, the outside fire pit, tennis courts, heaters. It's quite a, it's a long list of amendments.
Who's the owner? I don't know. Is it the owners? I asked the question not that I care to know.
Is the owner the applicant?
But is the owner the applicant?
I believe so.
No, it's Eastern Propane because we.
Will own the tank?
Yeah, we own the tank.
You own the tank.
Well, actually, no, I take that back, the homeowner will eventually own the tanks. For right now, it's our responsibility to, everything is done professionally and approved by the town, and then the owners will take possession of the tanks.
And is there then kind of, I guess my concern is a continual inspection. Is there a kind of a contract then?
Yes, there is. Actually, by NFP 58, any provider of propane is responsible, so even if they were to take and change to another propane supplier, the first thing that that new propane supplier has to do is they have to go through the entire propane system and ensure that it is all up to standard, and then it has to be documented, and it's called Massachusetts Program called Gas Check, and that has to be go on file, the fire department, wherever to do a audit, that has to be in place.
And are you also the installers of the other two tanks that are in there?
Yes, yes, we are.
And then how do you, I'm not familiar with the 1,000-gallon tank, it's quite big. How do you refill the tank? Is it a fuel truck that comes in?
Look at that diagram that I gave you, it's a cylinder. The tank is 16 feet long, it's 44 inches in diameter, and it has a dome on center, so the only thing that's coming out of the ground is actually that dome. In that dome, there is a periscope, and that has a connection point where the hose from the propane delivery truck would connect on, and under pressure would push the propane into the tank in a liquefied form. What comes out of the tank is vaporized gas, so when it comes out, it's similar to natural gas. The advantage of condensing it into liquid is for storage capacity. There's no natural gas available in the area where this estate is located, so.
So if that dome is injured, what are the ramifications of that in terms of the release of the gas?
Well, it would be like anything like natural gas. I mean, there is an odorant in it, as a matter of fact, it is the same odorant in natural gas, Macaprin, and, you know, it's very detectable even with a very minor gas leak.
Is that dome sticking up protected in some way, other than the casing around it?
Well, it's a steel dome, and it has to be in an area where there's not going to be any traffic going into that location. Like, in other words, not on the edge of a driveway.
No, but potentially landscaping, you know, across that area?
It would take like an automobile to be able to damage the dome, like riding on more would not be able to damage it.
But if this was the second or the first propane tank, you wouldn't be here.
Right, well, it's allowed to have up to two buried tanks, it's the third tank that is required, but actually, there's about 500 feet difference separation between the two locations.
Any other questions? Any public comments? Would you like to come forward, please, and identify yourself?
And do we have a supportive document?
I think there was.
It's a dinner, it got by me.
I didn't know that this was coming up this evening, and I know very little about it, so I put that straightaway, Holly Gifford, Monument Street. I'm wondering where these tanks are going to be located. I don't know which house it is, I'm not familiar with the number, but there is a large area behind many of the homes in that area that is nature, and, you know, the town, Estherbrook Road, it continues on through that back area. We've had so much damage this past year with the big storms, huge trees down all through town. My question would be if they are located toward the quiet area, potentially to the house, not near the house, but toward the more natural area that is now just a walking path. I would concern that maybe a large tree, or there are many trees that, but the conservation land there, could one of them potentially damage one of these caps that you raise? I'm just curious because it sounds like an awful lot of available liquid, and I'm not even familiar with it all, but it would just be a concern, and I don't know where it's located, but that would be my only question, that I'm wondering where they're going to be located and how they could be, are they very steady about not having any damage from trees and natural environment?
I believe we have a map.
Is there any large trees that are likely to fall?
Oh, there isn't, actually.
Maybe we can hold up the map.
Pretty quiet areas.
For those who are interested, here's a copy of the map that was submitted, so you can see where the tank is going to be put in. Perhaps the last speaker is interested in seeing on the map?
Just handed.
Chris, do you, in terms of the origin of the requirement, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm trying just to figure out what, I mean, I understand the concern about a tree falling on it, but why come before a board for a third tank? What is the?
That's the statute.
It's a state statute?
Mm-hmm.
But is it motivated by safety concerns or lots of use?
I think they just, I think they just want you to be aware that there's a property in town with a large quantity of underground.
And also, it involves the fire department. The fire department has jurisdiction of inspection and approval for the final completion and putting it into use, so it really puts them on notice that that, that tank capacity is there, so that they know, and matter of fact, they know where every propane tank is in town. And Eastern Propane has, last count, was about 70 customers in this area.
Do you have any other property with three 1,000-gallon tanks on it?
That I don't know.
This board has to approve the installation of underground fuel tanks at gas stations, for example, because I think they're 5,000-gallon tanks, so for that reason, above a certain size, the board has to approve, and I think it's.
Fire department signed off on that?
Yes, yep. Fire chief signatures on there.
Yeah, he has a chief judge recommended approval in accordance with, there's a certain restriction, I can get it for you.
Ready to move to the close?
I just have one question. How often would these need to be filled? How often does a truck come down to fill?
Typically monthly.
Monthly?
The one is like for emergency, so it might not get.
What's that again, I'm sorry?
Two 1,000-gallon tanks that are approximate to one another.
Yes.
They're for regular use. The third one is.
Standby.
Standby.
By generating, yes.
So it could be months and months.
Yeah, and there's actually going to be a monitor put on that tag so that we would get a message in danders, letting us know of a low tank level.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You have a motion?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, I move to approve the Eastern Propane's application for underground fuel storage, subject to the recommendations of the Concord Fire Chief.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, board.
You learned quite a lot tonight.
Yeah, it was good.
We are now ready to move to the second public hearing, which is the dog hearing, 15 Chase Road for violation of existing dog order. Notice was hereby given at a public hearing, and that was done on the complaint, Blue, failure to comply with dog order dated February 12th, 2018, owner Rachel Hitchcock, address 15 Chase Road. This, on February 5th, we had a hearing pursuant to Section 157 of Chapter 140, occurred before the Concord Select Board as a result of a request from the Animal Control Officer, Jennifer Condon, regarding the dog Blue owned by Rachel and James Hitchcock of 15 Chase Road, Concord. There'd been complaints that the dog had, over a long period of time, been escaping from the Hitchcock property and causing a public nuisance and fear among the neighborhood, which is near Thoreau School. Sworn testimony reflected that on four separate occasions, the ACO had issued, that's the dog officer, had issued quarantine orders for Blue. The four incidences considered consisted of three attacks on other dogs and one human bite. After extensive testimony from numerous neighbors, the board unanimously ordered that Rachel and James Hitchcock are allowed to walk, only Rachel and James Hitchcock are allowed to walk Blue off the property, that Blue must be muzzled and restrained at all times when on or off the property and outside the residential structure. The existing backyard fence must be replaced by a six-foot-tall stockade fence, which must be installed by April 1, 2018. The new fence must be equipped with self-locking mechanisms at every entrance/exit point to ensure that Blue cannot escape while in the backyard, and the Hitchcock required to install additional mechanisms on the residential structure to ensure that Blue cannot escape while inside the residential structure. On checking on compliance, it was reported that the new backyard fence had not been installed. I believe we have testimony from the Concord Police, and if you would come forward, I would.
Swear on all the witnesses?
Open the hearing by, first of all, all persons who intend to testify at this hearing, please stand up and raise your hand. Do you swear that the testimony to be given in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. And, good evening, if you identify yourself and.
I'm Lieutenant Joseph Morehan with the Concord Police Department.
And do you have any information regarding the status of the order following the compliance with the order that the Select Board had given on February 5th?
Yes, sir, there was a number of occasions that I've checked with the Hitchcocks in regard to the erection of the fence, particularly, as well as the dog officer, and that hasn't been complied with yet. There was some conversation about the expense on the fence, and they were going to petition the Select Board, I think at one time, for an extension, but I believe that that hadn't gone through, and so now we stand at this point where.
And I understand that Ms. Condon, the dog officer, is unable to be here tonight because she has a prior commitment in another town.
Yes, sir.
But I also have a, an email from her, and I just want to, I'll read part of it to make sure that it complies with your understanding, that on April 23rd, at approximately 8:15 a.m., she called and left a voicemail message and did not receive a call back. She also sent a text message to Rachel Hitchcock's cell requesting she contact her as soon as possible. She received no response. At approximately 10 a.m., she went by the home, and no response at the door, and posted the property to contact her. On Wednesday, April 25th, at 3:54 p.m., she received a text message from Rachel Hitchcock stating that Jim Hitchcock ended up speaking with yourself regarding the fence situation. She stated she had spoken to the Selectman's Office. She stated she had spoken to the selectman's office, and the Hitchcocks were supposed to get back in touch with her, which had not occurred. The, on the 25th, at 4 p.m., there was a text message to Rachel Hitchcock that she needed to contact the Board of Selectmen immediately. There was another text then, later, stating that the estimate for the fence was $7,500, and she did not know how they'd be able to pay for that, and that on April 25, at 10 p.m., there was another text to Rachel informing her that she needs to contact the Board of Selectmen or the town manager with that information. And does that comply with your understanding of the communication that Ms. Condon had?
Yes, sir. Subsequently, they were served with notice for the hearing today.
I'm terribly sorry, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
We cannot hear you.
They were subsequently served with a notice to appear tonight in regard to this hearing.
It is also, though, your understanding that during the time since February 5, that there have been no complaints of Blue being out of the yard or causing any harm or concern among the citizens?
The only, the complaints that we've gotten since that point in time have been anonymous, and it's regard to the dog being out in the yard and causing some concern for the neighbors who live adjacent to it, or see, who can see the backyard and see the dog jumping on the fence, and the fence is still in a poor condition.
So you have gotten calls, anonymous?
People wanting to be anonymous, and just because they're fearful of retribution, whatever.
But it was not, those allegations were not a violation of the board's order?
No.
That the dog be on leash, went off the premises, or restrained, went on the premises?
Yes.
Anybody else have any questions, or?
So one of the concerns I remember was that the fence was not, may not be strong enough, and I'm wondering if the dog is jumping on the fence as, as was what you seem to indicate?
I think when the people are outside, I think, oh, there's other dogs adjacent to the property, on other properties, and the dogs have a tendency, oh, that dog particularly has a tendency to jump against the fence, and the fence doesn't seem to be that sound, so there's concern that the dog ultimately is going to be able to go through the fence.
That's probably, that remains as the concern, is that the fence isn't, is not all that strong to contain the dog, although it did in this situation.
Yes.
Any other questions, or the office?
A question, I'm not sure to whom it should be addressed, but our original finding or order was that the fence had to be installed by April 1.
Yes.
When was the first time we heard from either the police department, or the owners, or anyone, that they had not complied with this?
I believe that...
I mean, I'm not asking you to say, you know, but...
I think the end of March, we were reporting back that the fence hadn't been erected yet, however, and then we were reaching out to the family to see, you know, what the situation was, and at, at that point in time, they were saying that they were having a hard time getting a contractor, and they were going to look for an extension, because they weren't able to get a contractor, and subsequently, subsequent to that, they were able to get a, a contractor to come out and give them a price, but I don't know if that contract was ever submitted to the selectman. And they were, they were directed to submit that to the Select Board, so they could review it.
I don't recall.
No, I don't, my understanding is that nothing was, I, I had contacted, the chief and I spoke about this prior to the April 23, and I know he may personally made a phone call and left a message, and there was some concern that there wasn't an appropriate response, that...
Yeah, it was on, end of March, like the 26th, they called the Select Board's office, and then that was passed to Assistant Town Manager Kate Hodges, and then from there, I don't think there was a, been communication, but I spoke to Rachel Hitchcock on the phone in the afternoon on the 26th of March.
And in fairness, March was a fairly brutal month.
I'm sorry to speak for the whole group, I'm scared, not just for myself, we're just not being able to hear anything.
I was saying that March was a fairly difficult month, so it might have been understandable that there had been some difficulty in getting a fence installed, but there certainly should have been able to be, get a, an estimate in terms of the cost, and certainly should have been communication, greater communication with the town manager's office and the board. No other questions, thank you. Do we have any other witnesses who would like to testify? And at this point, we're at the, the issue before us is whether or not there had been compliance.
My name is Shelley Amster, I'm from 44 Prairie Street, I'm the only a butter present, and even though it's been clear that the dog Blue has not been present, the other dog is there, and to me, it's the principle that the Select Board had requested for our own comfort zone, that the fence be put up. For full disclosure, I am the person with the dog who cannot use, I'm just not comfortable using my own backyard, not knowing if the dog will come out, just even if it's on a leash, even if it's muzzled, I'm just anxious.
Under control.
So I'm just here to assure, wondering why it's taken this long, and if it's now a case of financial, does that mean we don't get a fence, and that this is just going to be pushed under the table? I don't want to cause trouble in this neighborhood, and I feel like the bad person here, speaking up on behalf of the other neighbors who obviously had other conflicts, but I'd really like to get this resolved, so we can all move on.
As I recall, the earlier testimony is that kind of this issue had been going on, not just for a short time, but for many years.
I've been there 30 years.
And I think when it came before the Select Board, one of the reasons that sort of it didn't take place immediately after April 1 is we did want to...
Yeah, that I understood.
...communication, and then it was also necessary to file a notice in the Concord Journal, which was done, and that requires a couple of weeks, so, but I think there were many, as 12 to 15 people who spoke at the February meeting, and I think we all remember that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mike, did you... Would either of the Hitchcocks like to?
We'd both like to say a few things. I don't know if you want to go first, because you spoke to the town before.
Yes.
And if you'd start by identifying just the...
Hi, I'm Rachel Hitchcock, 15 Chase Road. Yes, I did contact the selectman's office on the 26th, and he was basically saying that originally, we were having a hard time getting a contractor to come out, because as you said, you know, March was, they were behind, because of so many storms. But then we, my husband was able to get in touch with someone, and we were just floored by the cost. So really, it's the issue of anywhere between $7,500 and $9,000, which is quite a bit of money. So we're not opposed to putting up a fence at all, it was just, it's the cost. We would love, believe me, we would love to have a little privacy and move on as well, but it's just an astronomical amount of money right now.
Who was the contractors that you called that wouldn't come out?
Reliable Fence was the, the highest, and then I have...
You said you were trying to get contractors to come out, and people didn't come.
No, people weren't calling us back, actually, in March, yeah.
Who did you call?
Reliable was the first one, they finally got back in touch with us.
They did come?
Yes, eventually, we had to keep calling.
Who else?
I had two other people I'm friends with, they're contractors, and they came out and gave me some quotes, what they thought would be, it's Robelar Construction and Siciliano Construction. They looked at it and thought 9,000 was high, but, and again, you know...
Their fence construction folks?
Well, they're not typically just fence, they're contractors.
Not a fence company, yeah.
They were giving me the professional opinion.
They give you another price?
They thought maybe between $5,000 and $6,000, they were just guestimating, but, you know, they thought the nine, or whatever, $9,500 or 9,000, I don't know.
Well, it could go up to nine, as well.
So you could get a fence for five?
Maybe, I mean, they were guestimating, but, you know...
Did they come out and give you an estimate?
They came out and they gave me, as a friend, kind of a one-on-one, just, you know, like, what did they think? That's how it was. Reliable's the official fence company that came out and gave me a high price. There was another fence company, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, and I was playing phone tag with them a little bit, trying to get a date down, and I never ended up hearing back from them after a week or so.
Know who it was?
I forget, it was some town, was it?
I thought it was like in...
So you had one estimate?
Yeah, I had one.
And two construction companies that you knew?
Right.
That gave you kind of estimate?
They gave me an idea of what I was going to be in, like, in for, after I received that high estimate.
You decided not to go with them because...
I don't have $9,000 for an eight-year-old dog.
I thought you told me they said between $5,000 and $6,000.
We still don't have $5,000 and $6,000.
A couple of people I know said maybe, you know, that's what they could do it for. I don't have that either right now.
That's, the issue is the money.
I, it was a lot higher than I thought it was going to be, no...
What did you think? I mean, you told us you could do it.
Yeah, I was kind of thrown into this whole thing, not knowing what to expect.
Well, you know, in fairness to us, we were told, we agreed, we've been complying with everything.
Everything.
I've had no way of knowing that a fence would be $9,000. There's simply no way to know that, or $5,000. I mean, we were thinking, the type of fence was very specific that was requested, it was a six-foot stockade. Obviously, there are cheaper fences we could put up for, but this particular type of fence happens to be very expensive, and that was the fence that was written in, I believe, was a six-foot stockade with the locks and...
Certain locks and all that stuff.
Yeah, that's where you get into, you know, quite a bit of money, and, you know, we, we have been, Blue has been religiously on a chain with a muzzle in the yard, we, we've put up a front gate in our front porch, because the way our front door works, it's like you walk right into our living room, so there's not really a barrier as far as, like, the dog. So we have a small front porch, and we actually put up a pressure-treated gate, so he can't just, if he did get onto the porch, he can't just bolt, and we have some sliding locks on the other doors. Just if we're not around, just keep an eye on one of my, my son, who was having the issue with leaving the door open, we put the sliding lock on. It was just the fence, and we're not opposed to it at all, it's just, it's just the cost right now.
Were you able to find a substitute fence? I know the order says it would be a six-foot stockade fence, and I'm just wondering if, when you were trying to call fence companies, did they say, oh, but we can do a different kind of fence that will meet the same intent, and, because I, you know, perhaps, you know, you come back with a proposal that says, we found that we can install a different kind of fence that will be of high integrity and secure the neighbors from, you know, the fear that they have. I don't know whether you got any other information from this fence company?
We didn't.
About other replaceable fence that would be, meet the same intent and still be visually, you know, blocking the dog?
Right. Unfortunately, I, I guess we didn't, I was under the impression it had to be very specific, like, what was written is...
I guess my concern is that you didn't communicate with the town or the Select Board.
Oh, I...
In fact, there seemed to be an avoidance. There were calls made, the chief called, as I said, and, you know, asked that you get back in touch, you know, it was kind of a, you're going to do it your own way, and you can't afford the fence that was asked, but there was no effort to try to solve the problem.
Actually, I called on the 26th when we got, we realized how much it was going to be, and that's when I spoke with him, saying I was concerned, you know, about the cost, so, and I was told, I'd get a call...
After you'd already been contacted any number of times?
Hmm?
After you've been contacted any number of times?
No, I contacted them on the 26th of March.
Saying what, on the 26th?
That when I realized the cost of the fence, I, I contacted the selectman's office with my concern, saying, what can I do about this? Is it possible maybe to get an extension, or I just wasn't sure what to do? So, you know, I was told that he would have to get back to me, and I, I personally, I'm not sure if he, I didn't get a call back, but I also did not follow up with the selectman's office, that's correct. I had, did, my husband spoke with the chief, and I've been in regular communication with Jen Condon, so I wasn't sure, there certainly wasn't intentional avoidance at all on my part, we just have been, you know, like everybody, really, we sort of had a couple of crises going on with two of my other sons right now, and my elderly mother that lives with us, so...
And I, and I, you know, I appreciate life isn't always as easy as we'd like it to be, and as I stated, I can understand that, you know, by April 1, that in March was a difficult month to get fencing done, as much as anything else, but, you know, we are now kind of, end of May, or towards the end of May, and there hasn't been kind of a resolution, and I don't hear what your resolution is to this. I mean, it's sort of, we can't do it, therefore, that's it?
No, no, not at all. We were hoping to try to find a resolution, we, we don't unfortunately have, that's why we, you know, we're here, because we weren't sure if we could look at another type of fence, or, you know, if that would be acceptable, whereas it was written in a contract, I was just under the assumption it had to be that particular one. But I guess that's why, you know, we came tonight to try to find a resolution that would be satisfiable, you know, for everybody, basically. We're not sure what to do, let's put it that way, to be honest.
Yeah, besides that, we've done everything that...
Yeah, we just want to...
No, and that I appreciate, but the difficult, the reason that the fence was one of the items that was requested was, I mean, you were here, you heard the neighbors, that it's a large dog, and it's not a secure...
It's an old picket fence.
Yeah, and he's, he can't reach the fence with the cable?
Well, the feeling was it wasn't a secure, they didn't feel comfortable, they didn't feel safe, given everything, you know, we tried to accommodate their safety concerns, which was, from my point of view, very valid.
Right, no, I understand.
And, you know, I'm a, a little frustrated, because I think there's a general feeling that nobody wants to kind of have the dog punished for something that, you know, it's not the dog's fault that the fence wasn't able to be put in, but whether there was any efforts to try to, you know, secure from family members, or some other, you know, method, or work with the fence company to get a payment schedule, or get your friends to assist and make it cost less, I mean, we need to get that fence built. Now, I think that, you know, as Alice mentioned, you know, maybe an alternative fence, but, you know, you should be bringing us the alternatives, rather than us imposing them on you, and I, I don't see that.
I guess we weren't aware of that, this is the first time we've done...
I don't, you know, it doesn't, you, you didn't make an effort to be aware of it. Who asks the questions? I mean, I, you know, that, when the chief of police calls you, and I thought that was quite extraordinary, I mean, I, I spoke with him, because I was afraid we would get to this stage, and the last thing I want to do is to, you know, have to put an empowerment order on the dog that your family loves, but you're not making it easy on us.
I guess we didn't realize, that certainly was not, that was not the intent, just to address...
Well, what was the intent, and what were you expecting to happen?
With regards to what?
We had a hearing, we issued an order.
Yes.
You said, okay, and now you say you can't do it.
Well, I guess when we had said, okay...
So what were you expecting the resolution of this matter to be?
Well, we were hoping that we could find a resolution, we didn't realize that, I guess it was sort of miscommunication and lack of experience on my end, to be honest. So we thought we were going to sort of work with you, we didn't know that we could come up with alternatives. I thought it had to be exactly what you had stated, but I did want to just address, you had mentioned that something about the chief of police calling, and that left quite an impression. My husband, he, he did not call me, just for the record, he called my husband, who spoke with him, so I was just wondering where the concern was regarding that.
The report I got, and I don't think he's here, I don't know if you're aware, Sergeant, about...
Lieutenant.
He's lieutenant, I'm sorry.
From the chief's perspective, he made a phone call, but I've also talked to, reached Jim a number of times, and we reached out to both of yous, and to Jen Condon and the dog officer. We've reached out to you too, and tried to press upon the fact that you needed to contact the selectman's office in regard to the fact that you wanted an extension, or that you were having a hard time with the fence, and that wasn't happening, and I think I've had several conversations with the angel in regard to that, and we notified the town manager, and there was no compliance and no return calls, and that was the frustration between the police department and the dog officer, and I think we tried to express that to the town manager, and he returned and made it to the Select Board. So there was a number of attempts made to contact you and had you contact them, because that was the process that was set up, and there was no compliance then.
Questions?
There's no other comments from the public?
Yeah, I just want to first, to sort of find, I mean, is there any, what do you all see as a possible solution? see as a possible solution?
You know, possibly a much less expensive fence, but, you know, still secure. Other than that, I'm not really sure.
Is the expense of the fence, the supplies? I mean, if you, you say you have these...
I could, maybe, but again, you want something done like this and have friends help you? Sometimes friends disappear. I can't rely on people to come help me put in a stockade fence by myself and I, you know.
Even the, well, the other...
Have you tried?
No, but, you know, I've talked to enough people. It's definitely a two-man job, you know?
No, I don't doubt that.
If you want it to be decent, you don't want Blue to come over to get it.
Did you ask your friends who came out to give you these quasi-estimates if they would help you?
Well, the quasi-money I gotta give them, I mean, you know, it's not gonna cost them, me, money to pay them too. So they were just giving me an idea whether that estimate was high or not, you know.
So when you agreed to the order, I'm just curious, did you have a price in mind that you thought it would cost to install the kind of fence that we were talking about?
I'll admit, I was ignorant to it. I didn't really, again, I was kind of flustered in this.
I don't know the cost either.
Not knowing what to expect.
Yeah, really not knowing what to expect, honestly.
I didn't know it was gonna be about thirty people here telling stories that happened ten years ago. And it just, you know, I didn't know any of that.
Well, let's not disparage the stories. They weren't ten years ago and there weren't thirty people. And that's the type of disrespect that I don't appreciate taking place.
I'm sorry you feel that way, sir, but...
Well, that is the way I feel. Because it's very important, you swore to tell the truth and the whole truth.
And I did.
And I, no, you didn't. There weren't thirty people and it wasn't ten years ago.
Some of the...
Let's, let's, you know, keep that true.
Okay, I used, I, you know...
You didn't tell the truth and the whole truth.
Oh, you're, you're correct. I used a little bit of, um...
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'd say they were telling stories up to about five or six years ago.
It was five to three.
And that is the truth.
Yeah, five to three.
Enough stretching it. And definitely the last two instances could have been completely avoided and we wouldn't even be here today if somebody acted like the adult in the situation and crossed the street with their dog on a leash that was quote-unquote, "My dog doesn't like other dogs."
We've had enough. Do you want to make us, if, just wait a second, I'm gonna, you could both, both can go back to the seats, please. Again, if you just identify yourself.
Sure. Shelley Amster. I have a suggestion. There are three carpenters that live in the neighborhood who actually have verbally said, maybe we could put it together. So, I mean, there is a way that the neighborhood wants it to happen and help them out. And I don't know if they did, no one knew in the neighborhood that it was a pricing issue. And maybe the neighborhood could help. I mean, we, this is how much...
Want to get it solved, but want to do it the right way.
Yeah. So it's just a suggestion. Unfortunately, they're not here. I was hoping at least one of them would be here, but there are people that are capable of doing it in the neighborhood that might volunteer to help at cost. I mean, I don't think they will cover the costs, but I think they will do it. So it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, no, I very much appreciate that. That's kind of constructive.
What it, I'm not, this is a suggestion too. If we, if we, can you continue a, you can continue a public hearing. If we continued the public hearing until our next meeting, which is June 4th?
June 4th, yeah.
Giving both the dog owners and the neighbors a chance to come back to this board, it's the owner's responsibility, come back, not the neighbor's. Come back to us with concrete, specific proposals for remedying the situation that they can afford to do.
And try to work with the neighbors. It'd be nice to have the neighborhood working together.
Yeah, we've heard how it works.
They'd never come to us with this.
Well, I'm...
Did you ever reach out to them?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry. Did you have some concern?
No, I didn't see anything.
Okay, hey, hey, hey. That's enough. Hey, that's enough. When the hearing, you know, you addressed your comments to the board, not to other people.
I'm sorry, somebody was behind me, bud.
Yeah. I would then, I guess, entertain a motion to con...
I don't know.
I would just add to Mike's suggestion about a time period, specified time period.
Well, as far as you mean that when they come back, that there be a time period or discussion about...
That the plan will be executed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
So I just want to make sure we are clear on what we would be expecting to receive on June 4th. And my, what I would like to see, if we're going to extend this hearing for two more weeks, that the family comes forward to this board with a proposal of what a fence, all the options for your fences that you've done your estimates for, you've been able to talk to folks, and maybe even photos of what the fence that you can afford looks like. Something that gives us information that says, is there something that is workable at a price that you can afford? And maybe in that same time, you're able to work with neighbors to see, maybe it's a community helpful, you know, response to see if they can help defray some of the costs. I don't know what that would amount to, but come back to us in two weeks with a full proposal. And the expectation would be, it would be implemented in the next couple of weeks after that.
I would suggest that it be a written proposal for the board.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Not just a verbal. Do you want to come forward?
Thank you.
I might suggest the materials be presented by June 1st, the Friday before your June 4th meeting, so that you have a chance to review.
That's a good idea.
Tony Gales, 62, Prescott Road. I'm not a neighbor. I was here at the February 5th hearing. I would not, might not be able to attend the next public hearing, therefore I wanted to just state what I wanted to say, which is that I understand you as the select board cannot direct the family to offer the dog for readoption, but I wanted to air the issue out and list it as an option, that it might be better if, if all the requirements for safety cannot be met in the end. It might be better both for the comfort of the neighborhood and for the benefit, welfare of the dog, that it be put for readoption. Thank you.
And I believe your husband has submitted a, a letter to the board, so we have that. So the motion is to continue the public hearing until June 4th with the, one second, with the recommendation that there be a written proposal as to how the fence and when the fence would be constructed, that would be submitted by June 1st so that the board could review it. Is that...
I would just say that is in compliance with the board's order.
The intent of the order.
The intent of the order.
To be able to firmly contain the dog, obscure its, you know, view, so that folks aren't afraid.
Do you have a question about...
I just, something, I was just wondering if it might be acceptable to, it could be a lot more cost-effective possibly to repair the existing fence?
I mean, whatever the, it's gonna have to be a constructed fence.
Right, right.
Whether you use some of the existing fence.
Well, I just meant replacing like the parts that, in the back, it's two different heights. In the back, it's six feet, in the front...
Needs to be six feet.
Yeah, and the back already is. It's not like closed slats. I mean, there's little spaces in between, but the front, well, not the front, but the area that faces the street, I think where the dogs before were jumping on the fence, that's only four feet. So I, I didn't know maybe if there was way, like, we could, if it would be acceptable to reinforce the six-foot part and then replace the four-foot with six.
Put that in the proposal and...
If that's a proposal, that works.
Because that could be a lot more cost-effective.
I think you'd get a much more receptive hearing if you had in front of us your best effort to resolve this matter, so that we don't have to take the action that we'll have to take.
No, I understand.
We're not just trying to create an expensive fence to solve the problem.
No, I understand that. Right, no, we, I, I really want to too. I, I mean, I, I really do. I just unfortunately...
I do think communication is very important and I think, you know, sometimes...
I get that now.
That means you have to reach out.
No, I definitely will make more of an effort. So do you think that might be acceptable, is what I'm asking?
We need to see, we need to see a proposal.
Okay.
We need to see the drawings. We need to know that what, what you're considering constructing would meet the same integrity for containing the dog.
Okay.
A photograph might be very helpful.
Oh, sure, sure.
We can have somebody in the town, say, in the public board or something.
Whoever's doing the work would need to show, you know, the size of, you know, what you're, what you're putting in to make that fence sturdy and...
Right.
So the hand drawing probably isn't sufficient. We'd like to know what the pieces that are in the ground.
Posts?
Yeah, the posts are.
We want to work with you if you work with us.
Oh, yeah, no, I really would, I do, definitely.
I'll second Alice's proposal then.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
We'll see you in two weeks.
Okay, we now have a slightly different issue of the non-compostable, composable plastic drinking straw ban bylaw. Concord Academy and students. Gretchen.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You would identify yourself and then make whatever statement you would like.
I'm Greer Hardin.
I'm Mika Cookwright. And we're students at Concord Academy. Greer is a junior and I'm a senior. I'm eighteen. I live in Concord and I'm a registered voter as of today.
Congratulations. And we have a fact sheet for you. There's a bunch.
Gretchen, do you want to identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm Gretchen Norbach and I'm also a Concord resident. I am their teacher that started this whole thing. There you go. Actually, they started it. I just helped them on their way.
Wait one second, we're still getting this paper around the room.
Yes, there's, there's enough for the public. So we, the students wrote a policy brief and they provided a fact sheet regarding the impact of plastics, non-composable plastic straws on the environment.
So what we're proposing today is some action for it on a potential straw ban in Concord, because we believe that Concord has shown the motivation for sustainable changes. There is the passion in Concord businesses. A lot of individuals are already taking action against straws. Hote Coffee has compostable straws and they avoid using straws wherever possible by using like reusable glasses for drinking and with like, for customers eating in, rather than like a cup with a straw in it.
Also Woods Hill has reusable ones, like metal that they wash.
And even Starbucks, which is like a really big chain brand, which is based in Seattle. In Seattle, there is a plastic and, which includes straws, like, I think it's utensils and straws are banned in Seattle. So Starbucks recently in Concord started carrying the special lids that they use in their Seattle store that look kind of like a baby sippy cup top, but like, they work well. And that's an alternative to a straw that like has less waste and can be recycled with a plastic cup.
Yeah, and there's a lot of places around the country doing this. So some are, yeah, like you said, Seattle, Malibu, Fort Myers and Miami Beach in Florida, Davis and San Luis Obispo, and New York City and San Francisco are in the process of considering a ban as well.
And the reason why we are targeting straws is because, well, straws are in the top ten of like pieces of litter found on beaches. And even though it's not the number one or the number two item, it's what's referred to as a low-hanging fruit. It's something that we can very easily do without. We really don't need, except for very few situations. And in those situations, we believe compostable straws can be used instead. But it's something that we can very easily eliminate from our lifestyles and it does a lot of good for the environment.
And Concord Academy abides by this and so does CCHS.
Yeah.
Do we know whether something like either the prison or the hospital, how much do they use of the plastic straws?
Well, we said, I don't know, but we said in our bylaw as an exception, if the hospital, if there's anybody that with medical, like, if it's necessary for anybody with medical, like needs...
An exception?
Yeah, would be an exception, yeah.
Sort of like the polystyrene.
So what I'm curious about, at the time the polystyrene proposal, the citizen initiative came forward, a lot of research had been done about what products had replaceable materials. And that there weren't at the time, which is two years ago?
Yeah.
There were not many alternatives to plastic straws. One was going back to paper straws, which some people in this audience might recall used to be what we had all the time. But that there were no common straws that could replace at the same cost. You can find pretty nice rigid ones, you can find those stainless steel ones, you can find things that are more permanent in nature, but not usually the kind that you would use in a takeout. So I'm curious, have you found in your, in your research that there are now products available that would be an easy replacement?
Well, Hote, the ones that Hote use, I don't know exactly the brand or anything, but those are compostable and they use them.
So they, you're saying that Hote Coffee currently uses a compostable straw?
Yeah.
For their cold drinks.
And there's also edible straws out there, which aren't edible in the sense that you would enjoy eating them, but that they break down with much more ease. Like a plastic straw can take two hundred years to break down. But a straw that's edible and can be dissolved by the human stomach will dissolve much faster if it does end up as litter.
Is that a commercially available product, you know?
I'm not, we saw something.
There's a new Kickstarter called Lolly Straw, which is made out of an algae, which will actually will disintegrate relatively quickly in water. So that if it does end up in the waste, it will actually break down if there's, as other things biodegrade around it. And that is coming to market in the fall. And there's actually a slew, because this has become the UK, as I think if you see their fact sheet, the UK is about to ban them. The EU is actually coming up with lots of alternatives to them. And Seattle has, there, there's lots of movement towards getting away from them.
And McDonald's, like, which is also a humongous chain because of its presence in the UK, is also working on distancing itself from straws and finding alternatives that are not plastic straws. So if McDonald's can do it, I think we in Concord can definitely do it.
As long as the materials are easily available for commercial interest, you know, that our businesses are able to go to their purveyors and buy the straws. Just so you know, one of the concerns back a couple of years ago was that when there are specialty suppliers of a single item, just say straws, it brings, what I've heard from the businesses that were trying to comply with the polystyrene ban, is that the cost of that single material was so high, because now you've got a different truck having to come in and deliver only straws, when they get all of the rest of their paper and now non-polystyrene and plasticware from a bigger supplier. Until the big supplier can carry this, it becomes a burden and almost cost prohibitive. That could change over time and maybe you're, what I'm hearing is it's possible that that's changing. But businesses have a difficult time buying straws from one purveyor and everything else from another. There's an economy of scale in the purchase.
The compost straws at this point are cost competitive with the traditional plastic straw. The problem is, is that not all the restaurants in town are actually using Black Earth, which is kind of our local compost industrial. So the compost straws have to go through industrial composting. They can't, you can't put them in your backyard. It has to go through industrial and not everybody, I mean, Hote uses one and some of the other restaurants do. And so compost is relatively accessible financially. But we have to find out about the other restaurants. So that was one of the questions that Kari Tari came today to the class and talked to us and said, okay, one of the things they have to find out is the cost of implementing[1659.08] and said, okay, one of the things they have to find out is the cost of implementing this and what kind of cost hardship would be on those restaurants that aren't composting now. And so the transition to composting straws is not.
Have you got a chance to read the polystyrene bylaw? Because I think that's, not only is that a good model in the sense it talks about who's going to be responsible for what the rules are, what the exceptions are, how they would be granted. So that's constructive. But also what's constructive is the process that bylaw went through to get to town meeting in a way that could be adopted. And you probably weren't there, but we had a public hearing in the hearing room about it. And it was not what I would call a positive public hearing. But the proposer of the bylaw paid good attention, listened and went out and then met with and talked to the folks who were going to be affected by this to see what was available, how they might comply, what the real issues were. And they were able to bring a lot of the merchants along. So when we got to town meeting, it was, you know, it was a kumbaya moment. It's not very contentious. And we had the same thing happen this last year with another one, which was the leaf blowers. And we had a public hearing about that. And as a consequence of that, the proposer of that decided this wasn't the time. He was going to work with some of the landscape folks in town to see what the right time was. So I think that the way the polystyrene thing played out and what the proposer of the bylaw did in terms of contacting folks and answering some of the questions made just a huge difference. And so I would really thank you for the initiative that you've taken and suggest that you follow that a little bit. And so when you come to the time for submitting petition warrant articles, if that's what you want to do, and we have our public hearing, you can say, wow, it's not just hot coffee. I talked to Menchery Cafe. I talked to whatever, Starbucks, the Trail's End. And they're all on board with this. So the hospital can't be.
Voluntary compliance you can get, obviously that paves the way. Do you see this as being something you would want to take before the town meeting? Or would you want this to kind of go before one of the town committees and work sort of in that mechanism? Have you given some thought on that?
We have given that some thought. And first I'd like to say that the polystyrene bylaw is what they, I don't know if you've read the students' bylaw, but they modeled it after that one. So it's similar in writing. And so they did look at that one and tried to figure out how they could use it as an.
So the process that they went through.
And the process, yes. And so, yes, they would like to, we have contacted, the students contacted lots of committees that was recommended. And the, none of the committees wanted to take it on. So they thought that the Comprehensive Energy Sustainability Committee would do it. And they, we talked to the chair and she said, this isn't the kind of thing we do. We talked to, they, we talked to an agent at the Board of Health and she said that it's covered under the polystyrene and the straws are polypropylene, so it's not covered under that. And she said, the Board of Health isn't interested in getting involved in this. But I think that's before she knew it was polypropylene. So they kind of did that. But I think at this point, they're feeling committeeless. And so.
That's why we're here.
So, okay. So we're here to you to get your advice and.
Polystyrene was a citizen petition.
Okay.
You're a registered voter.
So I just have a question though. Maybe Chris would be able to help. We have a polystyrene bylaw. What would be the process if we were to amend that bylaw to include plastic straws of whatever material? And so rather than have another citizen petition just for straws, is there something that we could do that's short of a citizen petition to town meeting? Could we, as we have occasional bylaw amendments by the zoning board?
No, a bylaw amendment has to be approved by town meeting.
But it wouldn't be the, it still needs, I was just thinking, is it an easier process then, starting from a new citizen petition on a single item?
Another way of, Alice's question is though, would, it could be an amendment as opposed to a new bylaw, potentially.
You could, except the bylaw's called a polystyrene bylaw, so people might not look for polypropylene products perhaps. This is, I will say this is well worded, you know, it did follow the model.
I would also suggest the woman at McDonald's who's doing a lot of the environmental work is the name Rachel Caprellian. She was the registrar of motor vehicles in Massachusetts and before that a state representative. And she might be very interested in providing you with information and assisting because they're doing it nationally, as I understand. And, you know, the bigger the group, the easier and the more help and they might very well be somebody who could be of assistance. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Congratulations on being registered. And now the next thing, you've got to get out and vote, of course.
Absolutely, starting on June 12th.
But this is, this is much more pleasant to have to deal with than dog issues. So we appreciate it.
One last question. So if the students want to go to the public hearing, they need to get the hundred signatures? And start doing a lot of footwork and knocking on doors, no?
If there were a special town meeting, a citizen petition article requires a hundred signatures. At annual town meeting, it's only ten registered voters.
If you go for the regular annual town meeting, it's required ten signatures.
Registered voters.
Of registered voters to bring a citizen petition.
My advice, whether it's good or not, you can judge, would be, first of all, I don't think we have scheduled a special town meeting. And I think you would be well advised to do this at a regular town meeting. Because the last thing you want is, it's too important to do a special town meeting because we only have 250 people out here and we got to, you know, you don't want that argument. So, and that gives you a little bit more time to.
It's almost a year, so that's great.
Build. And then I think if that's the thing, I would encourage you to come back and talk to us, you know, as we get near the time when we'll be opening the warrant for the 2019 town meeting, which will be near the end of the calendar year and see where you are.
I would also add one more thing, that in the meantime, if you haven't already met or talked with Scott Richardson, you might want to spend a little time with Scott.
We have a phone call into him.
Excellent. I think he'd be a great advocate. He'd want to work with you. And he's been through this a couple of times.
Thank you.
The name of the, your petition could be "Straws Suck." I've heard that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now on to public asset parking discussion. And Delia, are you?
Town engineer is, Bill Renalt is also here.
Okay, Bill. We'll get the whole group out.
So good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. So Bill Renalt, town engineer. So to give you kind of an update, I guess, on the parking from the last select board meeting. Public Works has met with a couple of representatives from the neighborhood as well as their engineer back in March to kind of go over a field visit and review some alternative proposals to what we had originally sketched out. Really looking on more of a cost effective approach to narrow the road down a little bit using striping and kind of dovetailing that with some of the work that's going on on Monument Street now. We provided some, you know, general parameters for them to look at. Followed up with the second meeting in April to kind of talk also with, with the police department who sat in on the, on the meeting with us. And since then, there's been another dialogue, I think, with their engineer, with the Public Works Director about coordinating survey to supply a plan for us to review. So, I mean, that's really where this has stood. So it's kind of been a limbo, I would say, still from the last meeting. We've had a little bit of, I'd say a great deal of dialogue, but ultimately nothing has been supplied to the town to review.
So that's what you're waiting for. It sounds like you're waiting for something to be submitted from the residents who are working with you on this plan.
Yep, exactly.
And the number of spaces that were to be provided, was it six?
We were at six. One of those spaces, we've also received another, another letter from, from Ms. White to not have any parking spaces in front of her house, but that was, we had one space out of the six located there, so.
Any date in terms of when you might be hearing from them?
Well, we heard from them last week to start looking at doing a survey using a, using one of those drones. And they would need to take up a lane, so we instructed them to go talk to the police department to coordinate details for that. And that's the last we've heard of it, so.
But you did have an estimate of the six spaces that.
It was about, it was about eighty thousand, eighty, ninety thousand dollars because the lion's share of that being relocating the retaining wall, constructing it to town standards based on our last couple of walls that we did. So like Haywood Metal Wall would be a good example, so.
Cars would be completely off the paved surface.
Exactly.
That was your, part of your mission was to try to get the cars out, so people could exit the cars safely without being in the traffic.
Exactly, exactly.
And how many, I'm sorry, how many spaces will we?
We, we looked at six. We thought that was probably the, a good cutoff spot because as you keep going further down Monument Street, going towards Carlisle, it starts to get pretty, pretty funky with the grading. So that we thought that was probably the best approach.
More expensive.
Exactly, yeah.
Another two spots could maybe double the cost or a small number.
Yeah, we would have to look at, because the grades kind of tip and it's.
So I think the board was open to considering six spaces only, sort of a try and see, get the six spaces developed, see if that meets the public's needs, and then revisit it after a year or two and see what the results are. But at this point, the estimated cost is ninety thousand dollars to keep the six spaces on street. And Delia, you had a cost of, what was it, fifty thousand dollars for fifteen spaces off street, twelve spaces off street?
Any other questions?
But you haven't, I heard what you said about going north, but you haven't actually costed it.
We did, we provided that at the, at the select board meeting. Yeah, it was about two fifty to do the whole run, all, yeah, the whole ball of wax.
Was that twelve?
That was twelve. Yeah. But again, we're still working on, you know, a GIS plan with, you know, limited grading, plus and minus two to three feet. So we'd have to go out, get real survey to understand what exactly we can do, but that's a ballpark estimate. That's what we expect them to be.
Do you run into things like some utilities? There are trees, there's stone wall.
Trees and stone walls, yeah, a lot of those.
Was there some electrical box to the?
As you get further down, but that's way down, like in space thirteen, twelve, thirteen, somewhere down there, so, yeah.
So the next step is you're waiting to get a proposal from the neighbors who had done that hand drying and they were going to be working with their engineers?
Yeah, on our sidewalk, they talked about trying to re-stripe the, the existing roadway to try to narrow down the spaces, to try to narrow down the, the travel ways on either side and to try to provide some additional space that way. That was going to be proposed to us, but you know, the concerns we would have is, you know, the curvature of the road to make sure it's consistent with the, you know, the traffic speed and it's designed to, what it should be doesn't worsen a existing condition, that type of thing.
I think I also remember a conversation about adding some sort of traffic calming as, because there are so many people coming out of the cars. Is that something that's in the ninety thousand or that's just?
No, we didn't have any, any, any traffic calming. What we had, I mean, we did a speed study out there a few years back where we found that the speeds were within two miles an hour of what the posted speed is. So we don't see that as a major issue out there at this point. It's more allowing the ability to actually get out of the car. Because, you know, when we went on our sidewalk, you can park directly up against the stone wall, but I mean, obviously if you have a passenger, you can't get out of the, out of the, out of the car, so.
We don't have the ability to change the speed limit there, right?
We don't. No, that's a, that's a posted, yeah, that, yeah.
Approved by the state.
That's approved by the state, yes. A regulatory speed limit, no problem.
Well, I don't remember the facts and I'm sorry for that, but in my visual sense, there was a difference between the, the length of the parking spaces that the neighbors had in their plan.
Exactly.
That in their plan.
Exactly.
And, and yours was larger, as I recall, right?
Yeah, correct.
And is it a law or just good?
Good engineering practice. Typically, you're between eighteen to twenty feet for parallel parking spaces. And one of the other things that we looked at too is that we didn't really want to have a parallel parking maneuver. So we don't want to have a tandem, well, a three space configuration. So we wanted it to be tandems so you can pull in and pull out and, you know, both would allow it to pull in and pull out. So you'd have only two spaces together at that one location, if you follow my logic.
And the road going north, I remember the topography a little bit.
Yeah, drops right off.
Drops off. Does it level back out? I mean, was it possible to, you know, where it drops off, not have any parking? But my recollection was it leveled off.
It, it levels off to some degree. Again, we weren't looking to take easements and to grade onto the property. We were looking at it as a, you know, a typical town project, we wouldn't be necessarily grading onto other, other properties if we didn't have to. And in general, we don't remove stone walls, just as a general rule, obviously, for town character, so.
Any idea how long, if we get a plan to implement that, to do the work?
Well, I mean, we're working now out there. So, I mean, the goal would be if we had the ability to get in there and we had funding, a funding mechanism, that's, that's also a piece of it. But, yeah, we, we're going to be, we're going to be knowing it in about a week, week and a half at this point, so.
Monument Street from the bridge to?
Bridge to Balls Hill.
Balls Hill.
Yeah.
So they'll be, they'll be working right there. But as Bill pointed out, this project wasn't included in the, in the plans. And last winter, it might have been possible to juggle some projects and come up with some money, but now we're in the middle of construction season. We've made commitments on certain roads.
Yeah, exactly.
Contractors and that sort of thing. So it'd be a challenge to come up with ninety thousand dollars this summer.
And it can't, because of the way budgets are structured, even if you had an available intense capital plan, this funds couldn't be used for that.
All of capital, it could be, yes, but all the, we appropriated 1.3 million for the roads program, but this was not on the list of our projects.
Well, we very well might not want to do six spaces at ninety thousand if we're able to do twelve spaces at fifty thousand if that becomes, and that decision hasn't been finalized, so.
Oh, no, I know.
And that estimate was really a back of the envelope estimate. I think it wasn't an engineered based on any plans. Is that fair to say?
So it was based on the earlier concepts of the, of the parking plans, which would need to be reconfigured a little bit. But it was, it was an engineered estimate. It was a year ago, so there's that, you know, which, right.
But it is also gravel. It's a gravel parking lot. This area would be gravel, but the retaining wall and that wall is the big cost. That's where all that number's coming from.
So if we wanted to, if we wanted to do this, line quarter with what you said, see what happens. But we don't have the funds to do it. We'd have to wait until the next season.
We would have a contract in place to be able to do it this season.
Correct.
And we have somewhat, yes, please forward. You would come and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Nora Murphy and I'm a member of the Pinketacet Neighbors Group. And I hope I'm not stepping on the toes of my other neighbors and jumping in. But I, I learned at the last minute that this was on the agenda tonight. And I wanted to update a little bit from our end. We had a meeting that was either in late January or February and in front of the board. Or, well, actually, it was a meeting that we attended and we discussed about having our engineer speak to engineering. And I think that Rich Ryan was very busy before town meeting. So although our engineer contacted him a couple of times, they weren't actually able to meet until I think March 23rd. So it took quite a while for a meeting to be scheduled. And at the time, it seemed as though, I mean, our engineer found it was a very good and open conversation and seemed like things were, they're the worst possibility for, for our plan to be developed and be well received. Unfortunately, our engineer's schedule was such that he was able to make a proposal to us in terms of drawing up a plan. But we, he failed to inform us that the cost would change significantly if the trees leafed out before he was able to do a surveying because he could use a drone before the trees leafed out. But in, after the leaf out, he would need to come and do it on the ground. And unfortunately, he hadn't notified us of, us of that and he was unable to do the survey before the trees leafed out due to some of these delays in terms of meetings. So, you know, I, I just wanted to update the board as to where things stand, that it's in good faith that we, the Neighbors Group, want to put together a plan. I remember someone saying, we need to compare apples and apples. We still believe our plan will address the safety concerns. I mean, the, the planned concept, shall we say? And our, the engineer who we've been working with, who is a certified engineer and licensed to do the sort of design work that we're talking about. You know, he believes that the engineered plan would address the concerns of the town. And I think that we, you know, we're really more aligned, my sense from talking with the engineer, it seems like that we are very aligned with Public Works and some of the expectations. For example, you mentioned that your plan requires eighteen to twenty foot spaces, but so does ours. So I think that maybe there have been some miscommunications along the way. And, you know, my hope in hearing this discussion tonight is that, you know, one key piece of, of our plan is to try to avoid the cost of moving the stone wall because that is the most expensive part of the project. And it seems possible, given the roadway, that lines could be moved to create more of a shoulder that would permit safer parking and allow the ten feet that Rich Ryan has publicly stated would be what would be desired. And, you know, unfortunately, we're in a situation that we didn't want to be in where we are aware of the fact, I mean, I live at eight seventy through Monument Street, if I didn't say that at the beginning, so I'm aware of all the construction going on. And unfortunately, the timing of things just seems to have not aligned with the current, unless there's some way for us to collaborate in terms of introducing some of our ideas to the work that you're currently doing. For example, experimenting with shifting the lines, but it would depend on engineered drawings that we don't actually have, but perhaps your department already has for that section of road.
So we don't, because there's a milliner overlay, we did it based on our GIS information. So it's not, because really what milliner overlay, the type of work you do is you're just planing off pavement and putting it right back. So it doesn't really require that level of survey. We do it on, unfortunately, half the roads program has survey, half the road program doesn't. So that section unfortunately doesn't at this point.
Yeah, yeah.
So do I understand that your engineer is not going to be in a position to do the necessary survey until the leaves, leave the trees?
Well, we, we have a few options, but we haven't had a chance to discuss them in our Neighbors Group. The cost when proposed to us of surveying on the ground is more expensive and not, I mean, expensive beyond what we would be willing to pay. So he would need to delay, to do it at cost, would he? So, he would need to delay, to do it at cost, what he proposed, before he'd have to wait until the fall to do the surveying. Are there other surveyors in the area who could do it? It's, it's hard to, to know, and we haven't had time to investigate fully. We'd like to work with the town.
Yeah.
And we, we're sorry for, for this conundrum.
In the meantime, cars are parking on Monument Street as they had been-
Yep.
-parked with wheels probably on Monument Street.
Yep, sure.
So, I'm hearing that if we have a delay to meet a cost concern, that seems okay, at least to me, I don't know about my board, and that, you know, cars are still parking in the way they've been parking for decades or more. And we can wait till your engineer is able to, you know, fly a drone when it's not leafed out and see if you still want to continue with that plan. I mean, that, to me, that seems pretty reasonable. I don't know, what do you?
I wonder if Steve Nees would help out with the drone?
I don't think he's got the equipment to, he's got the drone.
It's a special drone. It is a, it is a spe, it is a special drone, yeah.
What I'm trying to understand is what, and I ask us just, it's a simple question. What is it your engineer survey guy is going to say with or without drones that Public Works doesn't know? Or where is it that if, he's going to come up with X number of spots as opposed to the number we've got? What is it that we don't know?
Because the plan that was provided by the neighborhood is not a two-scale plan. They took what we had and then sketched on spaces, so it's not accurate. It's not as accurate as-
It was accurate.
Sure.
You're telling us it would cost like two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars-
Oh, to do the whole run? Yeah.
With their, forget for the moment whether their plan is, you know, an engineering plan.
Gotcha, yeah.
But to get spots from where their spots start to where their spots end-
Yeah.
Is it going down that slope?
You got it, yep.
And so the cost is going to be more?
Yeah, two-fifty, so, at range, yeah.
Well, can I, can I jump in? Because I think the Rich Ryan's plan, which required moving many feet of stone wall, that's the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar plan, or whatever that ballpark figure, the ninety thousand and then twice that. But we proposed an alternative that didn't require moving the stone wall, or I understand from talking with Dan Dylasky that he and Rich talked about potentially removing some stones from the top of the wall in certain places to allow for corridors and so forth.
Sure.
But the cost, I just want to emphasize, the cost of our plan is not two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So ultimately, our goal, which we tried to communicate in December at our, our presentation, is to improve the safety, even though this is an area that's already documented as having had no reported accidents in the last fifteen years by either the state or our local police force, even while there have been many accidents in other part of town, I want to add. But we recognize people feel that they want to have greater width for the spaces, so our engineer came and looked at the site and said, "There's possibility for that simply by changing where the lines are and adding in the fog lines." And it sounds like Rich Ryan is open to that as well, but my understanding is that for the engineering of it, it needs to just be drawn out to code so that it can be consistent with the other demands of the road. As you were saying, the lines are consistent with the curvature. But our engineer, who is licensed to do this sort of work, believes that simply by moving the lines with maybe some small amounts of stone removal would solve our problem, would meet the demands that Rich Ryan has specified, but at a very low cost compared, it won't be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
I was, I was at the meeting when we discussed that, and we threw that idea out at the meeting, for, at least, that was from my perspective. And we looked at, you know, how we would construct a stone wall in Concord, and that's what we would do. We wouldn't be removing specific stones to allow a car door to open in certain locations. We also talked to him about the plan that was provided and said that, from our perspective, we don't believe that that's accurate, and that you'd need to do a full survey and demonstrate that you can actually make the plan that was submitted to us work, because I don't, I don't believe it, it does work. So, what was on there and what was shown, the, the dimensions are, are not consistent with the work that we did that is to scale, so I, I know that that plan's to scale.
It's like, I mean, we worked off of the map that your group had produced-
I just get the burden of proof that's going to be on, on you.
Well, also, this isn't, this isn't a discussion between the two of you, so we could ask, let us ask our questions-
Sure, of course.
-and not try to debate.
I do understand, but I'd like to make a clarifying point.
In a minute.
Thank you.
So, is it possible that a set of plans could be provided as the neighbors intend that might be satisfactory in an engineering sense to the town? Forget the cost.
So you're saying, ask the question again, just so I make, make sure I'm clear?
If I understand the neighbors, they believe that they, when their engineer gets a chance to do this, whenever that is, that they would be able to come back with a plan that creates more parking spots, reduces the need to move stones, and, and would still provide an adequate number of parking spots at a reduced cost, not reduce-
Yeah, recruit, prepare to, prepare to our estimate, yeah. And that's-
Is that possible?
We said we're open to entertaining it.
Possible.
Yeah, I think it's, it's, it sounds reasonable, and that's what we taught, said to Dan.
So, I-
We'll entertain it.
I don't think there's anything that we can do tonight. It sounds like there are some, that engineer is unavailable for some period of time if he's going to go through with this plan to do an engineer, to do a survey. The next step would be for the parties to talk to one another with the engineering designs and make sure you're on the same page about what's required, and then for you to be able to submit to the town what they're looking for. I don't think that this board has a, has to do on this one.
I'm all in favor of that, since I got the answer I got. The other answer could have been, "No, I don't think it's possible to do that," and then let's, let's just bring this to, from the neighbor's point of view, an unhappy conclusion. But if it's possible, and we don't have the financing for it anyway, it seems pretty easy to me, right?
Would you like to just to add toward, sort of a last word here, or I think otherwise a sense is-
Is this truly our last word? Because I'd like to defer to my, my neighbor, Rich Churchill, I think.
Well, the sense I think we have right now is that this is not something we're going to make a decision on tonight. We're going to wait until your engineer brings a report. So if there is something, you know, that would address that issue, I'm hap, we're happy to hear it.
Well, just by waiting, you're saying even waiting until October or November?
We couldn't, we couldn't fund the-
There's still pressure with the season, I'm concerned.
From town manager, we couldn't fund this until the next season anyway. So, there's not much, even if we wanted to go ahead with this plan right here, we could say we're going to do it, I suppose, but we wouldn't actually be able to do it until next year. So, October, as long as we get it done and we get it to the town and the town has the ability to comment on it, so we could hopefully resolve this in a way that everybody says terrific. Because, because the NRC has an alternative plan. And while I know, you know, there's opposition to that plan, we're obligated, because we've already accepted a report from the Study Committee to, to get some stuff done here. And so, I'm happy to wait until we hear from it, but we've got to get this matter resolved.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure. Ford.
Rich Churchill at nine oh three Monument Street. I don't want to say anything that's redundant to what Nora said, but I, I was at the meeting along with Peter Gifford with Rich and Bill, and I just wanted to let the Selectmen know, Select Board, know that the point that Rich drove home to us was that our plan, because of the limited town finances to fund this kind of a project, that our marching orders were paint and dirt. So, to the extent that through the use of fog lines or some regrading, we could accomplish and, and demonstrate that there were enough spaces that met the constraints that Rich and Bill provided to us, then we think that that's a reasonable plan. And our engineer, Dan Dylasky, and Rich and Bill may disagree about the precise number of spaces, but our engineer is coming at it from the perspective that there's at least twelve spaces that can be accomplished, again, through paint and dirt, so in other words, de minimis expenditure on the part of the town. And, and again, to put this in context, based on our demand studies that we presented at our December hearing, eighty-eight percent of the time, the usage of that on-street parking is six spaces or less. So we think, you know, reasonable people can disagree whether there's six or twelve, but we think that there's some number of spaces that can meet the, the needs of, of the demand for that, for parking in that area.
We all hope you're impressed.
Peter Gifford, eleven seventy-one Monument.
What's that? Sorry, I was just going to, before Bill leaves, I think it'd be helpful to know, since they're milling the road and then resurfacing and restriping, are you, are you?
Well, the goal of the, we weren't planning at this point. I mean, ideally, if we had this plan in place prior to us milling the roadway, we definitely would consider it. But, I mean, ultimately, if we're talking paint and, and dirt, I mean, we should be able to make it work even if we're done with construction with minimum impact to what we've done, so.
Sorry. I just was curious, I think we thought that we could take off the top of the stone wall to allow a passenger car door to open in lieu of moving the wall, just to make sure the Selectmen understand what the options were.
Why don't you all, you know, we don't need to worry about that here.
You know more about stones than I do.
And the only other, probably completely useless comment, but on Wednesday of last week, I was walking the trails out back there, and a deal you'll know where I'm talking about, if you take the trail, that is the trail that everybody takes into Punk, but you take the one that goes down towards the pasture-
Yeah.
-and the barbed wire fence comes in on your right-hand side, and right at that point, the other trail goes back towards the base of Concord Houssetown Hill.
Yeah.
Right in there, on Wednesday afternoon, it was fine. My wife took a walk on Friday of that same week, which was last week, and somebody either on Wednesday night or Thursday night had built a campfire-
Okay.
Oh, really?
-in the field, right at that confluence. And the only reason why I bring it up is, is just my meager way of saying we really need to keep it on the street parking, because in-board parking-
It's on the, it's on the street now.
Exactly, but we maintain it, anyway.
Thanks. Well, I guess then the, the sense the board is that this is something that we'll readdress the point of time when more information has been provided and-
Yes, but-
-we'll have a further-
My only caveat is delays that get us out of the next season.
I think our goal would be to make this the next season.
We've got to, we've got to get this done during, so we can get it in funding for the two thousand nineteen town meeting, so. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is the Point Temporal Concord Housing Authority member.
Clear as a river.
I'm sure this has nothing to do with the Concord Housing Program. And my understanding is that there is not, the Concord Housing Authority has not provided us with the name. We do have some green cards here. Linda, you indicated that the process required a joint meeting. Is that correct?
That's correct. To fill it, because this is an elected position that needs to be filled, and it's, it's currently vacant, an interim position needs to be appointed by a joint meeting between the Concord Housing Authority and their, each of their board members or commissioners and the Select Board members. And Carrie would need to verify the process, but that is the process, and the Select Board has gone through that process previously. So, I was going to mention later, when we talked about our committee liaison reports, the Concord Housing Authority is aware that, and I think their first step was to notify the Select Board that they had a vacancy, which they've done. And I think they were looking for some additional recommendations of individuals who might be willing to serve, but they may also be ready to move forward with a recommendation. I think they were just being open in case the board had some recommendation. So, that's something I can help follow up with.
So, so the idea that, that I think we just briefly mentioned was for how, for our June fourth meeting, we could convene jointly at six-thirty.
Oh, okay.
And see if we could get that business conducted, and then we could go about our regular business at seven. And I'd, you know, I don't-
Yeah.
I would propose that, and perhaps we could hear back.
Okay.
But I think that would allow us to get, I would like to get this done.
Yeah.
That, so.
If you were going to report back to them, that that would be kind of the, our aim, and hopefully, that would be agreeable to them.
The board has copies of the recent green cards today in the materials, so-
You kind of pointed out that this is not necessarily a green card.
Well, it's, it's not really, we don't really get green cards for, because it's an elective position. So if you go on the online green card, you can't even choose that one, so you'll see one of those that says CHGC as their first choice, but in reality, you look back, what's my preference? Number one, Housing Authority. So, you know, also, they can come to the office and go through the unappointed green cards that we have, we keep it last five years. So there's probably someone that put Housing Authority. I mean, it is an option, but it's just not typically one of the Select Board is involved in it, so if you could relay that to, and I did forward to Mary Ann Ellison over at the Housing Authority, the same green cards that she had as well.
Okay, good.
So we'll have that, too.
Thank you.
The Affordable Housing Funding Committee update. I had received, I guess it was mid-last week from, I had written to Todd that he, he requested to be able to make a presentation tonight. Both Andrew and I had asked him how long he thought it would be and what was the general topic. He had been traveling, so didn't get back to us until Thursday, I believe, when he requested forty-five minutes to present. I wrote back to him that I felt that that was too long a time, given our agenda, and that if he could limit it to fifteen minutes and present us perhaps with some written documentation, that might be preferable. He then, I guess, spoke with other committee, members of his committee, and has requested a half-hour for June fourth. I think we'll have to see whether that amount of time, I, my preference is going to be that the presentation be limited and that the focus be more on some written information, and we can then digest that and have questions and material to ask. But he's not going to be presenting tonight, so we can. Climate Action Advisory Board draft charge. Alice, you needed a little additional time, and so we are going to continue that until the June fourth meeting. And we'll have a copy of that before the meeting in order to review. So we now move to review and approve order of taking for Monson Road extension. There is a memo in our packet that it's necessary pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter seventy-nine and Section eighty, Chapter eighty-two, that we shall sign an order within a hundred and twenty days of the roadway acceptance. At the two thousand eighteen Annual Town Meeting, Monson Road was accepted under Article forty-three, and this order finalizes the acquisition process, formalizing the extension of Monson Road as a public way. There was a seven-page document included in the packets. I don't know if anybody had any questions or comments regarding this.
Our engineer stayed in case you do have questions, but it's, it's pretty standard. Town, town meeting, again, voted to accept the, accept the street.
We just thought you were so fascinated by what happened. If we don't, I'm happy to receive a motion.
Okay. We, the select board, by virtue of the provisions of the applicable general laws, as amended, and all other powers and enabling authority, adopt the order of taking dated May 4th, 2018.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all. And now, we have the, I thought was an interesting, Notice of Unique Real Property for Garo Land. There was a notice of, that, in our packet of today, that there's a draft notice of unique real property vote that the select board needs to execute at their next meeting. There's also purchase and sale agreement, apparently, the unique aspect of the property, I'm never quite clear how...
Yeah, it's a little strange, but typically, if, especially if towns are looking to acquire space for, say, for office space or something, you would issue a request for proposals, solicit bids from vendors that want to lease space for town operations or something like that. Same thing would normally take place when you're purchasing land, but typically, the land is unique, and that you're acquiring this specific, specific property, not because you just want any seven acre of land, you want this particular seven acres of land because it's proximity to the rail trail and the pond and so forth. So, Chapter 30B, I think it is, that part of the procurement law requires the board to vote that this is a unique property, and therefore, you're not...
Is there something similar for all...
Balls Hill, any, anytime we purchase land, this council advises that we, you take this action.
And this gets recorded with the deed?
Yes.
So, we just, just if we wanna go ahead with it, we just move for an affirmative vote on the attached motion?
Yeah, for that motion, the board has all copies of it, and you just have to read that into the record for it.
You have to read it into the...
Yeah, confirm that with Kate Hodges.
Do you wanna do the honor?
Sure. I move that we approve the motion on the recording of a vote of the Concord Select Board, May 21st, 2018, at a duly-called public meeting of the Concord Select Board. On May 21st, 2018, the board voted as follows, that the board has determined that advertising under General Laws, Chapter 30B, for the town's acquisition of the following parcel of real property will not benefit the governmental body's interest due to the unique qualities of the properties, the land with the buildings there on, commonly known as 369, 37B, and 37Y, Commonwealth Avenue, Concord, Middlesex County, Massachusetts, containing seven acres of land, more or less collectively called the property. Property shown on the town of Concord assessor's maps, parcel number 2157, 2158, and 2159. Specifically, the property consists of open space that has access to Warner's Pond. Portions of the property may be used as a town beach, and other portions could be used for other recreational opportunities. The town's acquisition of the property is consistent with the 2017 Open Space and Recreation Plan, because it would increase access to active recreation and waterfront opportunities in West Concord. The existing home on the property may also be redeveloped for affordable housing.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, and now, discussion of town manager's contract extension, I believe the copy of that was...
Sent out by Andrew.
Sent out, and it is a one-year contract that is consistent with the prior contract, except for a increase of 5% in his salary, and I believe that that was, the major, it's been reviewed by town council, so I would entertain a motion on that.
I move to approve the town manager contract extension as drafted.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
So, can I just announce, I appreciate the board extending my contract for another year, my contract expires June 30th of this year, and it would be my intention to retire next, next June 30th at the, upon the expiration of this one-year contract, so I appreciate the board's granting of one more year.
We're somewhat aware of that coming, and we're sorry to see you go, been a long, sweet journey.
Thank you, Tom, very much, but next year, at this time, you might be saying something different.
Well, maybe a year from now, we'll be extending the contract year again.
I was hoping to cross out that one year and slip in a few...
Thank you very much. It's been an honor.
Okay, we now have a warrant for the June 12th special municipal election.
Yep, so you already, you already did approve the ballot, the last meeting, so all you have to do is just sign it, it's the...
All right.
Sorry, that's all, we just need to note that we've signed.
And, okay, we now are ready for public comments. Yes, please.
I'm getting used to this drug. Good evening, Carolyn Reed, 83 Wits End, I'm a member of the PEG Access Advisory Committee, and I'm pleased to announce that today we reached a quorum. Today, the school committee appointed its member, Court Booth, which makes our fourth person, and I believe we have a tentative date for our first meeting of June 14th, which is a Thursday evening, at 7:00 PM, and as Andrew has pointed out, he'll be here in the select boardroom. I'll be working with Aaron Stevens, the Public Information Officer, who is the staffer assigned to our committee, and with Jean Hodgkins, our select board liaison, in drafting up that first agenda.
Terrific.
Any questions?
I'm gonna pass you a communication that I had from somebody in the town of Bedford, who is interested in retaining communications with Concord.
Oh, very good, very good, I'll follow up with, with this gentleman, absolutely.
Jane, I believe is going, is the liaison to the committee, so, her not being here, I thought I'd give that to you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
That's great. I think you've got good work ahead of you, and it'll be very interesting, we'll look forward to hearing progress.
Thank you, but I still have three more vacancies, so if you know of anybody else who's interested.
Are there particular skills you think is needed, that...
They need to like TV and watch it and have an opinion, and that's the...
That's a pretty broad set of skills.
Well, at this point...
If somebody had a listening world...
And be over the age of 17, right?
And probably should be a Concord resident. We do have one member, an ex-official member of, from Carlisle, Christine Lear, who is been, who's part of the committee already, so, yes, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee liaison reports.
Public.
Oh, public, yes, sorry.
Apologize.
Diane Proctor, 57, Sudbury Road, at the last meeting, when the June 12th vote came through for the ballot, I spoke about the fact that the legal voters would perhaps have another first Friday, and we have agreed, the board agreed, and voted yes, so this June 1st, first Friday, at Fowler Library, at 9:15 social, 9:30, we will commence a serious discussion of the nature of that vote. Tom McKean, present, will be the moderator of that event, we will have someone speaking from the Vincom, someone from the, the Public Health Board, and we hope that someone from the other side, as it were, someone who understands the retail side, and why this might be, from his or her perspective, advantageous, so if there is someone listening who would like to represent that point of view, we would be most grateful. Thank you.
You here in the back?
I'm sorry, you said that's at the Fowler, right?
Yes.
Just adding to my calendar, thank you.
Now, I guess, are there any other public comments, or we'll move along to liaison reports? Would you?
So, I already mentioned the Concord Housing Authority. I also attended the Affordable Housing Funding Committee, and they were busy drafting their final material for the presentations that they're gonna be, upcoming presentations they're gonna be making to the Finance Committee, as well as the Select Board, with the hope that they'll get some feedback from both groups, for a intended June public, going out to the community. That may be ambitious, but that's what they're thinking right now. And again, I mentioned it last time, but all of the housing committees, all of them, are looking for additional members, so if anyone interested, whether you're an architect, lawyer, just a member of the community interested in affordable housing, or just generally supportive of what we're trying to get accomplished in Concord, this is a great opportunity to participate.
Do we reach out to things like, say, the, any of the real estate companies, brokers and that type?
We do, and I think in general, many of these committees are tilted in that direction, so it would be good to have a broader cross-section of people to join.
Mike?
Yes, I attended the, and chaired the Financial Audit Advisory Committee meeting, major agenda item was just to meet with the auditors, to see about the schedule that was upcoming, and I think some concern, we had a little bit of delay in getting some actuarial information this last year, which slowed us up a little bit and brought that to our attention. And then, the other item of debate was, in our charge, it talks about this advisory role with respect to picking the town auditor, and one of our members has brought to our attention the fact that that, that that role, it's the town manager who appoints the auditor, and gets recommendations and the like, but one of our members is bringing to our attention the fact that many towns have shifted that in the interest of openness, that the town manager is essentially the person, the organization being audited, and perhaps another body ought to be doing that. So, we've had that discussion, and we need to check with legal counsel to, whether in fact it might actually require a change in the town charter, and, you know, so, we have to get that information and come back. It's not something necessarily the committee's going to do, but it's something we are talking about. I attended the municipal light plant, had an evening meeting, in an attempt to sort of broaden the input it got from citizens. I'd say there were maybe 30-some people there, I may, maybe a little bit off, but that's about right, it was a good discussion, there's a presentation by the chairman of the board, and then there were questions from the audience, and there were lots of good, interesting questions, and as somebody who's not real knowledgeable about this, what comes across is, this is complicated, and it's complex, and it's changing, and so I think a light plant should be applauded for having that evening meeting, to get some additional perspective from the town, it was, was an interesting meeting.
Is there thought about doing that on a more regular basis?
Well, I don't know, I won't wanna speak for them, but they're in the middle of a strategic plan, as you know, and also then trying to implement essentially Article 51 from a town meeting with respect to energy bills, so they've got a complex set of initiatives that they're worried about, and it's gonna require change, and change in what they do, and it's gonna change our rates, we don't know exactly how much, so the thinking is just more output from, more, more engagement from them, to try to make sure that the town is informed as possible, so I don't, I don't know, wouldn't surprise me, and would probably be a good thing. Finally, I attended the Tax Fairness Committee, they're continuing to be not concerned, but interested in making sure that we get as broad a knowledge as possible about the new senior tax exemption that goes into effect coming up, and they've been, the towns are gonna send out on their behalf a postcard, and they've got some follow-up activities to go. And the one other thing that came up at that meeting that's germane for all of us, because it came up at our meeting last time, was they asked, could they continue? They did this tax fairness thing, should they continue as a committee, and I told them that we had discussed, you know, take a broader brush look at committees about overlap and the like, so I told them that was a good question, and they should be thinking about it, and be prepared to respond sometime in the future, so that's, that's the meetings I attended.
Tom, I had one more I wanted to report on, if you don't mind. I did attend the ZBA meeting, and as we know, the application for Cafe Nero was approved.
Alice?
So, I've been traveling a bit in the last couple of weeks since our meeting, so I can report that I attended the Minutemen Regional Invitational Technical High School Committee meeting, construction meeting, and the project is really moving along really well, there's now beginning to put on the exterior steel components, and now would be a very good time for a site visit, so if this board is interested in going to see the current level of construction, I think that this would be a good time to go for a site visit, and maybe what I should do is send an email, or getting ideas of dates of people available to join on a walk, and we'll arrange for it to happen, and I'll send that out this week, see if we can find a time to go for a site visit. It's quite impressive.
They're on budget and on time.
On budget, on time, and safe.
Yeah, and I believe just got some additional funding from the state.
That was not discussed, additional funding?
Yeah, received, there was a, some thing I read somewhere, it was fairly, pretty sizable, it was a...
Additional funding, not as part of the original project agreement?
That's what I kind of understood, I think there was, for the chair's breakfast, Carrie Flood sent me an email, and I read it at that, and obviously did not...
That's good.
Memorize exactly what I said, but that was my understanding, so...
I'm unaware.
Okay. I had attended the Dog Park feasibility study, and as Chris mentioned, they're having their public hearing tomorrow night, and they, the discussion primarily was on how to publicize it, what information was gonna be provided, how the hearing would go, and it'll be interesting to see how many people do show up for it, but...
7 o'clock, and where?
7 o'clock in the hearing room. Okay, I guess we are...
I have one more I should probably mention, I think several of us were there this evening, it was the presentations of the preservation awards for some pretty phenomenal historic renovations of properties. One is the Middlesex Barn on Lowell Road, there's a home on Monument Street that was recognized for its historical integrity...
Near the center.
A home, I'm sorry?
Right near the center, 50 Monument Street.
Yeah, that's it.
Not sure.
50. What are the, who, what do you remember from the other...
The Hawthorne Inn.
The Hawthorne Inn, for historic renovation of an old inn, and using materials from other barns in the neighborhood.
There was a house on Bow Street that, for new construction, that...
The Boynton Project on, second house off of Lowell Road, won an award for sensitive new construction in period design.
Yep.
And scope and size.
And they had a lifetime achievement award to Jane Gordon, which was nice, and then they...
Proclamation for the benefits.
Proclamation for the...
It was a good turnout, probably 30, 40 people there as well, it was great.
Not televised.
It was not televised.
It was in downstairs at Fowler Library, I don't recall seeing any.
Remember...
Also, you know who got an award, was the company who did the toy store.
Oh, yeah, the builder, designer of the toy store renovations, talking about, I talked with the afterwards, about the difficulties of renovating a very old building, and making it meet modern code, so it's now code compliant for handicapped accessibility, for universal access, it's code compliant for fire protection, and he surmises it's probably one of the only buildings on Main Street that meets that code.
But you don't see any, but you don't see, and I think what they got the award, part of it was, but you don't see that as kind of visibly, somehow did it.
Looks historic still.
And it had very poor electrical systems before, so only electrical capacity.
When that gets up and running, it'll be a great relief and a big benefit, so. Miscellaneous correspondence. Say, the only thing I had, I did get the email from, followed by the name of Jim Shea, who is with the Bedford PEG, and they are contemplating taking the, the town taking over the CCTV, the television, local TV, and we're interested in trying to sort of coordinate work with Concord, so pass that along. And I believe we did get a letter from regarding the dog park issue. I think some concern that one of the options might be having to impound the dog and euthanize it.
Not the dog park.
I'm sorry, the dog, the hearing issue, yes. And there was concern about that, so. But those were the communications that I received, so.
So I did receive a recommendation from a citizen who I also met with, who saw that the town had offered on two occasions so far, training for boards and committees. And she, this is from Jane Wells. She attended a training at the high school that she thought was superb, and it ought to be sponsored by the town in coordination with maybe the, you know, Adult Ed program as part of our training. It was a, it was called Conversations on a Civil Society: Agreeing to Disagree, and it's how you manage conflict in public meetings, and of course, we've had a few of those that we've experienced in the last year, which, and she thought it would be, she wanted us to be aware of how good this training was and see whether the town would also cosponsor or bring this back again, because this whole conversation on civil discourse is a useful time and place to do that.
Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. The league is very much interested in this, will enjoy cosponsoring this or try sponsoring this with the folks that did it so very successfully at the high school. And it, it's something that is on our agenda for next year, and we would, we would really appreciate being involved in that and supporting whatever efforts the town undertakes.
Trump, I'm not.
No, sounds like a very good idea. Okay, now we go to committee nominations.
So I can nominate Yanis Sittas, if I pronounced that right, Sittas, of 33 Brook Trail Road to the Concord Housing Development Corporation.
We also have two others for the library committee, Dennis Fiore and Pat Nelson. I do not have, they were in the enviable position of having two positions available, and I think they had twelve green cards, so they came up with, felt that those two would be very good additions.
Board of Registars, one that.
Oh.
Had two.
Yes.
That just came in, right.
That to the Wendy Ann McNally of 178 Westford, Westford Road, for a term of.
Library for me?
Board of Registars.
Registars.
From April 1, 2018, to March 31, 2021. And they want.
This needs to be an appointment tonight, unfortunately, because they have down a member, and at least one and maybe two members can't sign the nominating papers due to context.
She was recommended by the Republican Town Committee, so that.
That would be a balance.
Yeah. So I guess that is the, we should put both the nomination and a.
It needs to be signed on the election paperwork next week, so it's.
Appointment needs to be.
It needs to be tonight, unfortunately.
No, but as opposed to nominations, which don't need anything.
Right.
Yeah, just.
Actual appointments actually need to be moved.
Yeah, so we'll carry that name to the appointment list, too.
Well, that'll be, I'll pass the rest of the nominations on to Alice now.
So let's see, did you, is it included in this? It's not included on.
Not in.
No, it's, it just came in.
So committee appointments, I move to appoint Nathan Bozdet of 151 Hubbard Street to the Planning Board for a term to expire May 31, 2023. Robert Abraham of 81 Plainfield Road to the Hugh Cargill Trust Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2021. Jane Hotchkiss of 1479 Main Street as MAPC Magic Representative for a term to expire May 31, 2021. Amy Kaiser of 294 Commonwealth Avenue to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2019. Kate Yoder of 79 Deer Grass Lane to the West Concord Junction Cultural District Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2020. Anne Sussman of 534 Old Marlborough Road to the West Concord Junction Cultural Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2021. And Wendy McNally to the Board of Registars of Westford Road.
For a term to expire March 31, 2021.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Can I ask a question before we go to the next one? Do I need to be appointed to HATS?
I don't know. I was surprised to see the appointment being made to Magic.
The MAPC sent the letter that we, the term ended, and we always need to have one. I could talk to the HATS people and see if we need to have one. You are the liaison to them, but I will talk to see if it's a formal appointment process, too.
Yeah, but I'm a, I'm just not hanging out there like there's.
You're official.
I'm an official.
Yeah.
Voting member of that committee, and I, so I wonder.
Well, that's a good question, because I would ask the same about the Hansfield Advisory Committee, which I am taking over for next year.
The N S, it was the TA Advisory Committee. Are these appointments?
Typically, in the past, when the board has voted their, your liaison assignment, so it's by vote, that Alice is the liaison to HATS. If you're a voting member, that's, those are liaison assignments, it may be that if you want to be a voting member of a board, maybe it should be an appointment.
Well, the MBTA Advisory Board is voting.
As opposed to a liaison.
Look that up.
The reason why I know is that MAPC sent me the letter and saying, add that.
We have several committee reappointments. Can I move those?
Yes, please.
I move that we are, we reappoint Helena Long of 55 Potter Street to the Tax Relief Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2021. Carmen Jackier of 38 Shore Drive to the White Pond Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2021. Stuart Freeland of 573 Lowell Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an associate member. And Elizabeth Akerstmore of 86 Holdenwood Road to the Zoning Board of Appeals as a member for a term to expire May 31, 2021.
All those in favor? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We would now, during the regular meeting.
I have a few more.
On the backside.
Oh, the other side, sorry about that. Saving paper. Well, we confirmed town manager appointment.
So I can move to confirm the town manager appointment of, oh, of Ed Nardi of 29 Academy Lane to the Natural Resources Commission for a term to expire May 31, 2020.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Another committee appointment.
Reappointment.
Reappointment. Move to confirm town manager appointment of Tom McKeen of 138 Neshadak Road to the Commission on Disability for a term to expire May 31, 2019. Cynthia Rainey of 80 Hunter's Ridge Road to the Board of Assessors for a term to expire May 31, 2021. Brad Hubbard Nelson of 221 Neshadak Road to the Comprehensive Sustainable Energy Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2021.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, the appointment of elected officials pursuant to CHMAS General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 12. We have a request on the behalf of the Board of Registars, the reappointment of four voters as election officers for term to expire July 31, 2018. Maureen Belt of Lincoln, Cassette Dunn of 131 Ministerial Drive, William Miles of 68 Commonwealth Avenue, Harp in 219, and Rosetta Moreau of 1990 Main Street.
I move to appoint the election officials just read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And now, we would, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing, discussing land acquisition, grow land.
So moved.
Not to return to open session.
Not to return to open session.
Second.
And I do, does this vote require us to do roll call, so?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you.